We're just trying to help you guys out, you know, you're doing the right thing and we want to do the right thing by you.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay.
I do, give us a few minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, the applicants requesting that they have a few minutes to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item is Singer Site Plan Critical Environmental Area, PD 24-35.
Hey, we've been doing so much.
I don't think she really thought we heard it.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, my name is David Singer from the law firm of Porzio, Bromberg &amp; Newman, and we are representing the applicant Stephen and Sydney Singer tonight, no relation. Before the board is a request for preliminary and final amended site plan approval on changes to a previously approved site plan by South Nyack. The property is located at 20 Terrace Drive in the town of Orange Town, lot 65.06-1-12, and is in the critical environmental area. No secret review is required for this amendment as it's a type two project. By way of brief background, the applicants were granted site plan approval by the Village of South Nyack Planning Board on January 12, 2022. Improvements approved included a proposed garage, covered walkway, a pool, and a patio with associated improvements, that also included retaining walls. Once construction of the approved improvements commenced, debris foundation from a prior home of the property was discovered. Due to this previously unknown discovery, a deviation from the previously approved site plan was acquired to where the retaining walls would be and could not be on the property. Further, since the present application was filed here in Argtown, the applicants decided to scale back their plans for the property, including the elimination of the pool and the associated variance that would have been required from the zoning board of appeals for the pool. There are no variances required for this amended preliminary and final site plan request. Tonight you will hear from applicant engineer Tom Scrabble from Scrabble Engineering, and he will explain the scaled back plans and the changes that would require the amended preliminary and final site plan approval tonight. We also have our landscape architect Bill Boyce from Biosphere Landscape Architecture, available questions from the board if necessary. At this time, I'd like to have my first witness, Mr. Tom Scrabble, explain the changes to the original site plan.
Sure. Do you want me to bring a board up, is that easier?
Yeah, it should be fine.
Do we have live on the screen?
We're working on it.
Okay.
I'll grab the board, right here. What I'll show you first, really briefly, is this is the plan that was approved by South Nyack. There was a fairly large carport, a connection to the existing house, patios in the rear, pool and patio set further down the slope in the rear, and then minor patio improvements closer to the house. This is the plan that was approved in early 2022. As Mr. Singer mentioned, when construction started, things changed a little bit, mainly due to soil conditions on site. So, this is the plan you have before you right now. The only change to this plan, again as Mr. Singer mentioned, would be that the pool is being removed. The Singers have been at this for a long time and honestly just don't have it in them to go to the zoning board right now. They're not precluding a pool in the future, but we're withdrawing it from the application as of now. So the only variance that was required was for a front yard for the proposed pool, that's eliminated. So, the remaining reason, I guess, why we're here would be the changes between what was approved by South Nyack and what's currently on site, because we're not proposing any other improvements on site as of now. So for that, I'm just going to show you an overlay which explains it best, I think. This is the same orientation as the last plan you looked at, Terrace Drive is on the bottom. Everything in the pink color was what was approved by South Nyack. So, carport, connection to the house, this was our drainage system, pool and patio here, patio improvements here, and extension to the patio to the south. So the pink is what was approved, the green is what currently exists. And basically, it's retaining walls. Walls that were built to terraced the site, because it's a very steeply sloped site. And then there's a gravel seating area with, I would call it, an arbor above, just some widely spaced wooden structure above the gravel area. And there's a small patio that was constructed as part of the current project in the green, which is hard to see because it's underneath. So that's really it. Our limited disturbance has been reduced as compared to what was approved by South Nyack. The impervious coverage has been reduced as compared to what was approved. We did do stormwater management design for the plan you currently have in front of you, that's on the screen right now. So you can see there's a pond on the extreme east side of the property that collects more than the difference in impervious area as compared to pre-construction, so 2021, before anything was started, to what we were proposing when this project was at its largest, which means including the pool and the patio. So the pond is now oversized for what we're proposing because we're removing the pool and patio, but because we did get conditional approval from Weston Sampson, the applicant has decided to not request any changes to that, we don't want to complicate it at all. The pond would get 30% smaller, but as you can see, the bottom of the pond is 14 feet by 21. So to cut a third of that off, it's the same job. So, they're not really saving any money by doing it, they're willing to provide the additional storage and call it a day. So, unless you have anybody else.
No.
Okay. The office building is only in planning, McOliver, August 28. He has 14.3 comments. I have a letter from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, September 9, Bruce Peters. He has 10 comments. I have a letter from Bureau of Fire Prevention, town of Orange Town, August 26, that one comment. I have a letter from Weston Sampson, September 3. In our opinion, the increased stormwater runoff can be successfully mitigated for this project. We therefore recommend that Singer Site Plan be approved in conjunction to the above project comments, of which there are five. What did I say, September 3, that was the letter, okay? Hold on, we can always come back there. I have a letter from the Rockland County Department of Planning, September 2. They have 9.1 comments. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning, Centecity, Orange Town, playing board, serving lead agent, August 13. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning, comments attached, August 13, 25. I have a letter from Rockland County Center of Health, rather, September 10, they have one comment. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, August 25, two comments. I have a letter from Alphagaddy, based on a drawing provided, there should be no gas conflict for the proposed work. Please contract owner in this business, and if there are, and 753 rules must be followed. I have a letter from David Roucher, New York State DOT, dated August 12. Says the proposed work is not within the New York Railway. I have a letter from New York State DOT, August 12, Centecity, Orange Town, serving lead agent. I have another letter from New York State DOT, August 12, this project is outside our jurisdiction. Is there anything else?
Did you do Paul Gant's?
What?
Paul, Paul.
Oh, I didn't answer. Oh, it wasn't, no, I only got the one.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, I didn't get any, I don't know, but I have a letter from Paul Gant, PE, August 18. And he has three comments. July 24, 24, is that?
Correct, yeah, correct, it was post-poll, so we should have been able to go.
This is the Gant's, could you see?
Yeah.
Paul Gant, August 19, he has nine comments.
You can keep this if you want.
Yeah. I have a short EAF, statement of principal points. Okay, I have a letter from Thomas Scrabble, PE, consultant, July 17, 2025, basically narrative. I have a short EAF, signed April 15, 2024. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, July 3, 2024, one comment. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, July 8, 2024, they have two comments. A letter from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, town of Orange Town, July 16, 2024, of which there are 17 comments. Letter from Bureau of Fire Prevention, town of Orange Town, July 9, 2024, two comments. A letter from Orangetown ZBA, June 5th, 2024, no comments at this time. And I have a letter from Rockland County Planning, June 5th, comments attached, July 24. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning Department, June 9th, twenty-four, Cent. Town, Orangetown Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Health, July 3rd, comments attached. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Health, July 3rd, Consent to Town, Orangetown Service, Plaid Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Highway Department, June 4th, no future car mods for this site, should be sent to his agency. I have another letter from Rockland County Highway Department, June 4th, Consent to Town, Orangetown Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from the Village, South NIAC, January 12th, 2022. Right, just a minute. Now, okay, thank you very much. Any question, comments?
Uh, just a couple. The landscape plan, it doesn't show any shrubs or plants or anything that you put in there?
There's a, a plan for landscaping. It intend, it was not intended to be addressed on those drawings. Those drawings were specifically to respond to Mr. Peters' prior comments about showing how the project changed over time, essentially. I'm not sure if there's a landscaping plan that's been prepared already. I have not prepared it, but there is a plan to landscape the site.
You got a plan with the, I think we'll, we'll read that plan with the, uh, Rockland County Plan, case that it'll have to go through Akabor. I mean, you have a plan here that's, that's labeled landscape, and that's why I'm asking for the landscaping.
Yeah.
Or anything like that. I don't believe this is an old plan, because it still shows the pool.
Yeah, that, we have not updated the plan to remove the pool. That would be submitted, hopefully, subject to an approval tonight, incorporating all of the other comments that you mentioned. We don't have any problem with any of the comments that we've received, so we will stipulate that we will satisfy those, with the exception of anything that obviously pertains specifically to the pool.
The plan that's up there now, all of the pink area is, has been approved, is that, is that correct?
Correct. Was approved by South NIAC.
By South NIAC.
Yes.
All of the green, that's what you're coming to us with?
That's what exists today.
Oh, that's what exists.
Exists today. And as you can see, the, the, there was going to be a separate series of walls, kind of parallel to Terrace Drive, to build that patio extension, the stairs down, and then the pool and patio, that were further to the east. The walls didn't get built that way. They basically got pulled together, tiered closer, and, and lengthened, and that's why you see that larger green area that's, that's now sitting above the walls.
So, this plan, this blueprint, does not, um, doesn't show what it is today?
No, it does. The green is what it is today.
Okay.
That's based on an as-built that was done after those improvements were constructed.
Okay. Those improvements were made after you got it?
Yeah. Though, basically, what this is intended to show is the difference between what South NIAC approved in pink and what exists today in green. And, and again, it's essentially retaining walls, the larger area where it says seating area.
Here? This is the, the area that's, you know, changed the most, I would say. There's a sitting, a screen sitting area with that, that wooden arbor above, and it's a brown surface underneath. I, I didn't see anything on any of the plants that shows the wooden arbor. Is that permanent destruction?
Yes.
It's going to, or it is right now.
Yes, it exists. And there's no, there's no roof on it, it's not, it's, yeah, it's, is there fabric on top?
There's a one-inch wire mesh.
Wire mesh, screening.
Just to keep deer out.
But it's, it's, it's basically just to provide a little bit of shade and, and kind of separate the space.
I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't have anything.
Do you have any questions, comments? Yeah, two things. That area you talked about, where they're growing vegetables.
Yeah.
First of all, plans that were submitted are not, plans that were sent out for review are not the exact plans. These, these plans were not approved by South NIAC in the first place.
No, that's the first drawing I showed you.
That's all the green. The green stuff is what's been added. No approval for those. You come for approval for those. Do we have a clean plan that shows just that, or do we have a plan that shows what was approved, what has been built? It's?
Yeah, we've submitted all of those, honestly, the, and you can see all of that existing information on the site plan that's before you.
We need, we need a clean site plan. It's got to be, so the ZBA, it's got to be filed, it's got to be a clean one. That's the old plan?
No, this is, again, this is the current drawing. It shows the arbor areas, the patios that exist, the walls that exist. Everything in green on that is on this drawing. The only difference is, we were also proposing a pool, which we have removed.
And the heights of the walls, the engineering, what, what is the heights on those walls?
I think the largest we get to here is about eight feet.
You have an engineering report signed by an engineer as good structure.
That was done, because it was required during construction by the building department.
Which building?
Orange Town.
Where is, it should be, were these permits given out already? Have these, have these buildings?
The wall was done before, no? I didn't do the engineering on the walls. My understanding is that during construction, when it was realized that the walls were not at exactly the same height and location as was shown on the approved South NIAC plan, the work was stopped. It was required to get engineering design to be submitted to the, to the billing department.
Was that submitted with the plan showing the new location and the new?
An as-built drawing was also required? Yes. Were they submitted exactly the same time? I don't, I can't answer that, I don't know. But that's initially why the as-built was done.
So, South Orange Town, okay, the walls, why we were putting them in?
The town of Orange Town, again, came, an inspector came on site, and this is all my understanding of what happened. I was not physically there, but the walls were, are obviously not exactly in the same spot. The work was stopped. We needed design on these walls. We needed an as-built drawing. Those things were provided.
Have that, Rick?
Yeah, all that was submitted, but now it's not part of this right now.
What, what exact plan are we approving tonight? We're looking at, everything seems to be a mishmash of what was approved, what wasn't approved. We don't know, was there approvals on these walls?
But I think they started in South NIAC, and here they're trying to get everything done, including the walls, but with the drainage and the tonnage constraint, because this has been going on, they have decided to pull the pool out, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's correct.
So, they, they got approval for drainage, and they are trying to do everything appropriately.
Was that approval based upon no pool or a pool? Questions?
It was based upon with the pool.
With the pool. So, that, this, plans that were looked at by all the consultants, in fact, are not the actual plans that would be submitted?
That's correct, yeah. The decision was made, but, you know, between PRC and I, you can't change the plan, so they had to go with what they had.
Okay, well, all right.
Correct.
I have no further, because I can't hold on. Plans that aren't complete and finished, and that's what we're going forward with.
Well, we suggested, everything is on this plan is what is as-built, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
It's already there.
The plan that shows the pool.
Right, that's the only, if I were to, if we were to resubmit a drawing, a clean plan, as you're requesting, the only change would be to take the pool off.
Right, which we're willing to do as a condition of, of approval.
But this is the plan, they're voting on a plan, that's going to be submitted, but it's not the actual plan. So, if we take the pool off?
That's it.
Be the same exact plan without the pool?
Should have a clean plan.
We couldn't.
That's a big condition.
Yeah. We couldn't submit between the PRC and, and, and this meeting.
I know that, I know, but that's the, because people did reviews on these things based upon what was said.
But.
So, but they're lessening.
Which, we're lessening, and we're not changing the drainage, we're not, we're not, yeah, we're, we're keeping the drainage that was approved, we're not altering that at all, so literally, the only thing that's coming off is the pool, which lessens the impact on the application.
Exactly, the, um. So, originally, you wanted a pool, which is the, what about the covered off what?
Now, that's been off the plan prior to it being submitted for this meeting, prior to it being submitted to the PRC. So, there was a carport, yes, you're absolutely right, there were improvements in front, there were paver areas for the, the circular driveway, and piers, and gates, all of, all of that proposed work has been removed. And really, the, the reason is because they're just trying to get done with this. They, they got caught in the middle of it, they had no intention of, of doing anything wrong, and they, they just want to be done.
So, all the plans that we have here are the same ones that show the pool?
Correct. No, a plan without the pool does not exist yet. Our intention was to hopefully get it, something from this board tonight, some sort of approval, and as a condition of that approval would be to submit a plan that meets any comments that still pertain, and remove the pool.
I'm, I'm looking at, at one thing from the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters, September 9th, number eight. As with the previous submission, it is unclear exactly how a contractor would be able to construct, i.e. use machinery, construct both the pool and the pool rain guard. There are multiple mechanical laws between the SEC and the proposed improvements, not to mention the steep drainage. John Schall clearly demonstrated how the proposed improvements are being, so what he's saying is, is he's still looking at it as if the pool is there?
Again, absolutely, because he hasn't seen a plan without it. But the, the issue is, is, and we discussed this at PRC, I understand his concern about getting down to the back. So, the solution was to move the construction entrance to the other side, where there's a flatter area, and we can access the back with, with equipment.
Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can interject just briefly. I mean, generally, in a case like this, we would require them to come back with new plans. I discussed with counsel, and Mr. Oliver and I have also discussed, this is kind of an unusual case, because they are profoundly simplifying this case. They are removing, the problematic aspect of this application was the pool. They're saying, we're not going to do the pool. So, all of the major problems that Mr. Peters and everyone else had with this application relate to the pool. They are removing that in a very simple manner. So, it's my opinion, as a legal matter, that if you wanted to vote on this, with the condition being that they submit the plans without the pool, I think that would be legally sufficient in this case. In general, I would, I often would require, I think it would make sense to have them come back with new plans, but in this case, because it is profoundly simplifying the matter, and there's no doubt drainage would improve, and I told counsel, you know, you could probably have a cheaper, you would have less drainage requirements if you come back without the pool, and they said, we'll pay the extra money, or we'll do the drainage that's required for having a pool, but they're not going to have a pool. So, long story short, it's, it would be okay if you think it's appropriate to have them come back with the new plans, that's okay, but I'm saying, as a legal matter, I think it would be okay for you to vote on this, even though the pool does need to be removed, as long as the condition be that they submit the final plan without the pool. So, I believe you could vote on it.
We said in the present, that's from.
And if that's the way the board views of it, that's okay as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see what the rest of the board has to say. Did he have any questions or comments?
So, just the same, it is very, the way you described it, it's very different, it's very confusing. So, but this pool grading in, I think, as, as the plan, doesn't show the pool.
That's the pool, yeah, it's almost like a splash pool, is that what you would call it? It's small.
Okay.
The pool is.
It wasn't that, I see, okay.
Ten by, ten by sixteen.
Okay. All right, no, I, it's just, it's just very confusing. I, without the pool, would we have to go to the Akabor? Why would we have to go to Akabor?
This board could waive Akabor, if you chose to.
Yeah, that was, I did not think it had to go to Akabor, but the Rockland County decided they thought it should.
But they, they don't have a landscape plan, they can, I mean.
As I said, if you want to have them come back with that stuff, that's something that you could do.
If they come back with a clean plan without the pool, and add a landscape plan, and add we go with Akabor, they won't get a chance to see that one? That's what the board has to say.
I'm not happy with my view.
Oh, we understand why it's a little messy. Every time we get something from South NIAC, there's a little, some problems with, with not zoning codes, and, but I mean, when it comes down to it, it's a single-family home with little impact on the neighbors. You're actually, the plan you're talking about now is, has less of an impact on your own land. So, I mean, this is simple. This is just a, you know, a small, little, single-family home project. But, I mean, it's a big home, but I'm saying, in the whole scheme of things, you're only here because you're in the critical environmental area, you know? So, that's all. I mean, I know it's, it's been tough, but it's, it's really not a big deal, I don't think.
Okay, Matt, anything?
So, without the pool, you are in excess of the requirements for drainage?
Correct.
Like you are bird-winged, gold-star drained.
Correct, well, yeah.
The best drainage.
Okay. Will we say anything?
No, I, I don't have, I think, being that this is South, was the South NIAC project to be, I don't think we're saying.
I know, it's South NIAC, but I'm just.
Give him a moment.
Okay. Um, motion open up to the public, please.
Motion, for a second. All favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Anybody from the public, we should speak on this project. For time, anybody from the public, we should speak on this project. Period, none. Most of the calls. Motion, both of them, for a second. All favor? Any opposed? Uh, firstly, I would like to see you come back with a revised plan. If you ask for continuation, you can get right back with the head of the list, you don't have to wait on the calendar. Um, I think if you come back with a clean plan, that it's going to solve the board's, a lot of the board's concerns, and some of the consultant reports, I think, will be revised in your benefit.
I, I understand your point, however, this has been going on a very long time.
No, I understand, I understand.
And we're, yeah.
Continuation, moving on a little bit.
But we're okay i- i- if, if, we'd prefer an approval, if the board's willing to grant it, with the condition to submit a landscape plan and a clean, uh, plan as a condition of the approval, but then to get the approval so that we can kind of keep moving this thing along.
I understand.
Can you pull the ball? Want to pull, pull the members?
We can, I'm, I'm just finishing discussing. Um, it's, it's, I understand with, with Andy's situation, and I kind of agree with it, it's kind of setting a precedent. So, we'd like to have, and, and the advocate, we would like to have a clean plan, we command everybody to resolve, you know, exactly, we know what you're doing, you know what we're doing, so we have no problems in, in the future. With the continuation, like I said, it puts you ahead in line, so if you could, let's say, two weeks, if there's an availability, and if you had everything done, you could be right there, and at that time, you have a very good chance of a quote.
I mean, I would, would ask to, to pull the board if that's an option, yeah.
Sure. First of all, the, 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 the,
Number twenty, have to fill in the, uh, code, which is the PCD, so it's in the Hudson River. On that, on that side, so you could also go on even under secret, going on a, a, a complete, correct.
If I may, there is no secret here, this is a type two, um, plan.
This is a pretty cool environmental area, yeah.
I, I think we can treat it as a type two, I think it is, uh, again, type two statutory defines what does not have significant, I think, qualifies as type two. May, Thomas Watson, PE.
What's your name, do you need an address for the work, please?
Thomas Watson, PE, Watson, PE and Associates. Under the secret rules, part six seventeen point fourteen, which is the, this, the designation of the critical environmental area, it clearly states that in the critical environmental area, it makes the analysis of a type one or an unwisted action mandatory. But a type two action still remains a type two action, whether it's in or out of a critical environmental area.
Uh, let me pull the board, see if they're moving them.
Andy, would like to add this. Question, to approve this plan with conditions, or have them return? Give them a pre preliminary, preliminary, and have them come back for the final site plan?
I'm approving, approving plans, since we're profoundly simplifying, we're profoundly simplifying the plans, um, and making a condition to submit plans without pool, uh, to the-
Now, because if, uh, the one with Andy, the preliminary, and they're getting to come back with more, he dropped the form, so they're only have something that is the actual plan, is it not? Oh, I'm sorry, it's, it's, my head's a little riled, please, please.
Yeah, um, I'm okay with approving it, as, as to mean that it gets submitted to the building.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would agree with the, with our counsel here, that, uh, moving this forward won't be an issue, so I, I agree with moving this forward.
I agree with moving it forward, but the only concern I have is the landscape plan. I mean, I don't want to approve a landscape plan if we don't, if we haven't seen it, but is it possible, I mean, there's existing landscaping.
And it's okay to make that a condition.
Yeah, and in, in other words, if we just say, you're going to delete the pool from the plan, and not do any additional landscaping, there, then we're approving something. Th- then we're not giving them a blank check to just put in some-
Bruce, you can't vote, because we've got a few more.
I, I don't have a problem with moving forward, though. But do you see any issue with preliminary or final?
I see, either, I think, would be, I think.
Yeah, options, continue, preliminary, or final, with the issues. Given pre preliminary, preliminary, and how soon can they come back to final?
Yeah, but we just, let's not say pre preliminary, that really doesn't mean anything, just preliminary.
Just give pre preliminary.
Not, not pre preliminary, okay, preliminary.
Preliminary, yeah, right. So if you give a preliminary, how soon could they come back to final, or do- Providing they have all the-
Have you treated us with your- But are you, are you sending them to an adi- additional board, are you going to send them to ACOBOR in the meantime?
We haven't decided that yet. Okay, let me ask you a question. If we, timeframe, would it be better to give them preliminary, or ask for continuation, which would be quicker on their part? They still have to do the same amount of work to come back to us. All, all things.
This project, because it's critical environmental, requires GMO, so I would have to send it back down to the county. So, so it's still, you know, forty days from the time that I, I received submission.
Okay, so tell them to be aware of that. Have you pulled the board? Yeah, I, I, I mean, what, I, because you were about six years ago, not after, was that? I'm okay with one.
Okay. Lisa?
Um, if I'm final, the conditions are based. Uh, the pool removed, they go to ACOBOR.
I'm, I'm, Mike, preliminary, okay, two and one, Denise?
I'm okay with final, I still don't know why they have to go to ACOBOR.
Go to ACOBOR, you know. We can waive ACOBOR, that's not a problem.
Right, okay, then, I'm okay with final, with the conditions.
Okay.
I'm good, I'm good with final, with all the conditions.
Good, Matt?
I'm good with final.
Okay. I have a motion for final conditions.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, we'll, we'll just state that this is a type two. Right, we'll just state this is a type two.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to be a firm secret, right, we don't have to do it, do we?
Uh, I don't believe you've done secret, and you really don't have to do secret.
Okay, motion for litigation.
I'll make them all.
We don't have to do secret, because it's a, it's a type two.
I'll just make sure it's all-
We just go motion for final, right? Okay. Motion for litigation. I did, I really don't understand. Okay, motion for, for litigation.
Does, does he need to-
Second. A second, all favor, aye, any opposed? Motion to get that.
Don't have to do that.
Okay. Motion for final conditions.
Motion for final, this is the last one.
You need to put the conditions in, you see. You can make a motion, you got it.
Did he made it?
Man them out, yeah. Okay, uh, Office of Building Zoning, Rick Oliver, August twenty eighth, he has, uh, fourteen point three comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, September fifth, Bruce Peters, has ten comments. Uh, Bureau of Fire Prevention, August twenty sixth, one comment. Uh, Weston Sampson, September third. They approve drainage, both comments. Um, Department, the Rockland County Department of Planning, September second, they have nine point one comments. Uh, Rockland County, uh, Health, September tenth, they have one comment. Rockland County Sewer District, number one, August twenty fifth, two comments. Alfred Gaddy, August twenty seven. Uh, New York State DOT, uh, August twelve. Holger Dan, August eighteen, he has nine comments. Do I have a second? Oh, I have a second. There's a request to waive the, the option for ACOBOR. We did have a, we had a, we have a ready before, we have a-
This is for specific conditions, so if there's anything you want to be a condition.
Is there a basic, like, if they have a pool removed?
Yeah. Uh, the letter from Thomas, Grapple, July seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, he has seventeen comments. Forty AF.
I believe that's, I believe that the seventeen comments, that's his narrative and response, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's no conditions in there.
Right. Uh, April fifteenth, Shorty AF. Rockland County Health, July third, twenty four, has one comment. Rockland County Sewer District, number one, July eighth, has two comments. Uh, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, July sixteen. Seventeen comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, July ninth, two thousand twenty four, has two comments. And, I believe, that's, uh, that's eighty. Uh, Department of Environmental Management, July sixteen. Twenty four, I think it's seventeen comments, I believe. And, um, also, do I have a motion that, uh, we waive with that, the applicants who go on ACOBOR?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion? Okay, all favor on that motion, okay. Do you think, is there anybody's against? Okay, anybody against? Okay, what against?
Two, two.
Who against? Mandel and Andrews. Uh, now, I need a second for final conditions.
I need a motion. I'll, I'll second.
Okay, all favor.
Do we, do we get, do we get into the specifics, that the pool removed, that verified existing wall?
Yeah.
The only, the only condition that I have with the motion and a second is that they waive ACOBOR. I don't, I don't have any other additional, like, the-
Site plans.
Right.
Sorry, amended site plans.
Oh, okay, right. So, if you, would you like to do amended site plan with, with the removed?
With the other, that's going to be a condition.
Landscape plans, okay, landscape plans.
As a condition.
That's a condition, yeah.
Okay, so landscape plans and amended site plan with pool removed as one condition. I need the motion and the- Motion.
Yeah.
Second.
But the landscape plan just showing as is.
Right, the landscape, we'll submit a landscape plan.
As planted.
Right.
So, a, a landscape as still planned. Or as planned to, as planted, as planted planned. So I have Lenahan, and-
Okay, Lisa? Okay. Oliver, yeah, okay, opposed? Rocko, okay, Rocko. Mike, uh, Ian?
Opposed.
Okay. Lisa? Mike? Four, okay, three?
Four.
Okay, Mike?
Four, I mean, did I say anything?
Matt?
In favor. Or do you miss one?
Mine, me too.
Yeah, but, 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 yeah. So, so that's the whole thing. That was a whole-
That's fine, I'm good.
I think it's the entire.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let me go back to, uh, what's the word? Oh, uh- Yeah, just push back, because they came back.
Okay, I think it's, it's your turn, guys. The guys, you want to come up for whatever?
Yes, we do.
You can sit here for longer, if you want.
No, no, no.
No, no, sorry, just saying hi to an old friend.
Okay, what do you guys want?
What you suggested.
So, you're going to put in your phone now?
Yes, I'll take the deal.
Or any other thing you have, and you, you're going to give the CO on that?
Yes, sir.
And then within three years, you're going to do the others?
Yes, sir.
If you don't, you can come back.
Yes, sir.
Come back to the planning board, to take them down, okay.
Okay.
That-
Real quick, so first phase is till the end of this year?
Uh, we, I'll give you, yeah.
Oh, oh, perfect, perfect, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Now, give me the thing. Uh, yes, okay, for, can I have motion, conditions, motion, conditions?
Do secret, yeah.
Okay, should we?
Did you do secret yet?
Got the secret on this one, reaffirm?
And this is-
Got to reaffirm it now.
Oh, it's position, yeah.
And it's also other business, it's just the, the request of, of-
Oh, my apologies.
Although, yeah, we did all that.
Motion would be to approve request by the applicant, restore nine approved lists, two phases. Phase one, four lists would be installed within three months, and phase two, the applicant would install the remaining five lists within three years. New building permit would be required for phase two construction.
And then, that was made, I'll meet to the motion, correct?
Correct. Okay, you guys okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, can I have a second? A second, yeah. All favor? All favor, aye, any opposed, none, okay, you got it.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Good luck, good luck.
Wow, thank you.
Forty-four Franklin Street Site Plan, PB twenty four dash thirty-three.
Chris Dalton? He's the owner.
Chris was owner of the-
Yeah.
Carl Ackerman, Arkington.
Yes, sir, can I help you with?
Okay, we're here this evening, my client owns forty-four Franklin Avenue, and it's an existing business as a right. Um, he's had trouble renting it in the past, it was obviously a flower shop, as we all know, in the history of the house, and it was originally a residence a long time ago. Um, my client wants to keep the existing business, business use in the front section that has a little bathroom, so it could be for a CPA or whatever, that wants a small space, doesn't want to rent out a whole building. The building has a, a brand-new kitchen in the back, it's all been renovated, he wants to create an apartment. This is in the, in the zone, CS zone, has plenty, uh, the county has written some letters that say this is not in the area, which is absolutely false. Um, I am a neighbor, I live in the CS zone on Central Avenue, and there's plenty of mixed uses along that whole area. So those are some of the coun- comments from the county, which are not really reality. Um, my client's just looking to get a better use out of the property, and he's also wants to add a garage in the back for parking of cars. And it's, it's a pretty simple application, I understand there's a change of use required, because it was residential, went to business, and now we're asking for partial residential use back on the property.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, before you start, do you have the half a day to post it?
I don't know if you brought it, no, I'm not sure, we can, can we handle it after this, or? We can print it out.
Was, was it the back posted?
Even you had the signs out, yes.
Okay. So just make sure you drop it off first.
I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Okay. Office of Building Zoning Planning, uh, Rick Oliver, August twenty eighth, he has seven comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town of Orange Town, September ninth, Bruce Peters, has ten comments. Bureau of Fire Prevention, Town of Orange Town, August twenty sixth, one comment. Uh, there was a letter from Weston Sampson, August nineteenth. Uh, and as our opinion that insignificant information has been provided to demonstrate mitigation of potential significant adverse impact with respect to drainage, we therefore recommend that forty-four Franklin Avenue Site Plan not be approved for drainage at this time. I have a letter from Roma Professional Engineering, August twenty sixth, this is the com- uh, the letter on it. Um, Rockland County Department of Planning, September second. They have ten point two comments. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning, August eleventh, comments attached. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning, August eleventh, consent to Town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Health, September tenth, one comment. A letter from Rockland County Sewer District, number one, August twenty fifth, two comments. I have a letter dated August twenty eighth. Alfred Gaddy, based on a draw provided, does not see like the existing building footprint has changed, so there will be no need for gas connect conflict. I have a letter from the Town of Orange Town ZBA, dated September third, consent to Town of Orange Town Planning Board Service Lead Agent. I have another letter dated, from Town of Orange Town ZBA, September third, uh, no comments at this time. Also have- Letter from Carl Ackerman, dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-third, it's a narrative. I have a Shorty AF, uh, September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. I have a letter from Office of Building Zoning Planning, Jane Slaven, July third, two thousand twenty-four, she has nine comments. I have a letter from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, July ninth, Bruce Peters, has eleven comments. I have a letter from Bureau of Fire Prevention, June twenty fourth, one comment. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, with, uh- I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, June eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, with, uh, twelve comments. Letter from Rockland County, uh, Health, uh, June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four, one comment. Letter from Rockland County Sewer District number one, June twenty-fourth, two comments. I have a letter dated May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, from Rockland County Planning, comments attached. Another letter from Rockland County Planning, uh. May twentieth, uh, consent to town of Orange Town service lead agent. A letter from Rockland County Department of Health, June sixth, two thousand twenty-four, comments attached. I have a letter from Rockland County Department of Health, June first, two thousand twenty-four, consent to town of Orange Town planning board service lead agent. Letter from Orange Town ZBA, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, consent to town of Orange Town planning board service lead agent. I have another letter from town ZBA, May fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four, no comments at this time.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any question or comments?
Yeah, the, uh, the garage could even put in the back, is that gonna be for your own personal use?
Yeah.
And I noticed that the, uh, driveway comes off of the street. House and garage.
Correct.
And I have another driveway to the side as well, so, to the, to here.
Okay, so that, alright, so that driveway concern is the garage too?
Yeah, correct, absolutely.
But only the side, or are you gonna, you know, the turn?
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of room to come in, turn around and go back out.
There's plenty of room to, yeah, there's plenty of room to turn and all that.
Yeah.
Are you gonna put any landscapes in there, anything around the garage?
Absolutely, uh, just finished landscaping, just the last couple of days on the property as it is, but when we do the garage, we'll definitely decorate, because it's next to the school, so I want it to look very presentable, you know?
Yeah, there's a small strip of land there, there'll be grass, setback.
Cause right now, that shed at the back is, it's there for years and years and years when I bought it, but it's, it's, it's like an ice ore, when you.
You're, that, that'll hold down?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's fine.
So, you, you're gonna put any trees or anything in? Did, uh.
There's not much room, if, if he can, he would gotta do that.
Okay, so you're gonna put like grass in?
Grass and some, maybe some arboretis or whatever, just for some screening of the side of the garage to the school.
Lisa, question or comments?
Um, so, let's see, I have a copy of.
Our, our position is that also, this comment from the county is a little bit of arbitrary and capricious, because we have our own site access road. My, my client here is a contractor, can easily build this garage, we don't, that easement's been there before he purchased it. And it does, we've, we have a letter that we can submit today, his counsel, I personally have called the school district, have gotten no response. His counsel has reached out many times, and will submit this for the record to the school district, but there's been no comment back. There's never been an inconvenience, there's never been a complaint, he's a good neighbor, it's always been there before he purchased the property. Um, there's other properties in the zone, and I know every application stands on its own merits, I live on Central Avenue, my neighbor built a three-car garage identical to this application with a driveway probably less than this. So the comment from the county that originated it, and I know in Jane's letter, she reiterated it, it's not merited, it, it's really, he can build a garage using that road.
Well, so I'm just kind of, Bruce Peters is saying.
Yeah.
And number one, that, uh, you must submit to the planning board, that how we've done prior to.
Understood, and we're asking for relief, we, we proper noticed, it was properly noticed, the school district, you can ask, I don't know if they're here, but.
So you don't have, you don't have it written right, or you haven't?
No.
Well, we have, uh.
And we have his letter to submit for the.
The letter from, from my counsel that we submitted, this has been going on for.
A long time.
Like a year and a half, looking for somebody to get back to us and to happen, you know? Can I submit this letter?
Yeah, yeah. We have copies of the board.
Trees with comments.
Can I just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last any questions?
Just, uh, when you heard what, uh, Lisa said, uh, we got, you know, the barrier into that, uh, entrance off of the school driveway there.
Easement, easement, yeah, easement, yeah.
That has school, I'd like. I'd like. Other one, uh.
Okay, I have one question, uh. Is this the property line, or is this the property line?
The curve, the curve is the property line.
Yeah, the curve.
The curve?
Yeah.
That's your property line?
Yeah. Here's the survey. The property line is right on that curve there, going through. That, that grass area is part of the, yeah, that's part of the school district, this, the edge of the inside, whoops, it's gone, is the property.
It's not the curb line.
Correct, it's in board.
Good, that's what I'm saying, cause you have, uh, I lost it, okay, you have, you have, this the curb line, and this is your property line, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this is the school property?
Correct.
Okay.
So, so are we asking, you're asking for, like a zoning change, correct?
Yeah, it's a change of use to allow a residential apartment, this is a business as of right, right now, and we're asking for, I guess, the term of being an accessory apartment.
Okay, but, we don't need zoning, so, I guess, what do we, you know, look at that?
Yeah, the garage, and if we do need to go to zoning for that portion, we understand that that's a referral.
Right, and we have to go to zoning for that, just cause of the, this, um, spacing, you're too close to your, you know, the edge of your property and stuff?
We, we don't, no, we don't need variances for the garage.
Just for the.
Just the use alone is what we need.
And the drainage wasn't.
Correct, and we, we're going to address all those comments, we're gonna move the drainage in front of the garage, the concern by the county was that the drainage system is too close to the building, which I don't understand, but it's a requirement, there's no foundation here, there's no, gonna be no mitigation underneath the garage when it's a slab on grade, there's no impact. But we're going to move it between the, the house and the garage, all the leaders are gonna connect to it and be mitigated in that fashion, but that will be revised, I already submitted it, but we can't, we couldn't update plans.
Mike? Oh, yeah, as you can see with the comments, there's a few issues going on here, you got the easement, with the school property, you have, you didn't get proof of drainage, uh, and Rick Oliver's comment number one is pretty strong, you know, you, his application is for a change in use.
Mm-hmm.
And later on, he, he suggests the board should review the application, continue the item, not make any determination, and request the applicant go to ZBA for the use change. Wants the change in use granted, the applicant will come back to the planning board to review the site plan.
Understood.
So he's saying we don't even make a determination tonight until you guys make that change of use.
Correct.
Cause that might, it might be, you know, not.
Yeah.
Right, we're not asking tonight, it'd be great if we get it approved, but we're not sitting here saying we need it approved tonight, we understand.
You just wanted our comments.
Correct, we need you to send us the zoning. Cause you, they've already said your lead, correct?
That's all I got, though.
Yeah.
Matt?
I don't have any.
Okay, Bruce?
Uh, can we send it to zoning without giving a form there? I know they, they were used to be able to, well, you probably could do that, but we, we never made a practice of doing that, and, and it, I think not even so much us, the ZBA wouldn't necessarily hear it, it. By time here, I think we tried, there is a statute that authorizes to proceed straight to the planning board, but in this town, the ZBA sends it right back to us. The ZBA generally doesn't do, um, on us to do secret, and then, but, um, I'll be, Rick, however you think is appropriate. And you didn't give a secret, why don't you go there, something? So we don't have drainage.
My question is.
Yeah, there's no drainage.
No, we did submit drainage.
How big is, how big is the garage?
Yeah.
How big is the garage?
Yeah.
First, are they asking, how big is the garage?
What?
How big is the garage?
The garage, it is, uh, excuse me, my apologies, getting that off the top of my head. Hold on one second. It's twenty-four by thirty-six, three-car garage.
That's a pretty big lot. How come it's so big? I mean, it's, it's property isn't that big, you know?
Yeah, no, he.
I mean, it's, it's a little tiny little house up here.
Yeah, he, he.
Three-car garage is a little overkill for.
He is a contractor, not that he's.
And I have two, um, collect, collectible cars, so that I want to put in there, Lincoln Continental and the Crown Fixer.
Looking at, you said something about you, you have access to the property off of Franklin Avenue, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
So what, what is this access off the, uh, the road that goes into the school?
It's always been there, and it's come up because the county reviewed the application.
What do you mean it's always been there?
It's always been there, my client did not add that curb cut.
No.
He purchased the property in that.
It's been there for.
There's a curb cut?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's a fence along the whole.
No, I know.
There's a curb cut.
It's been open for many.
Many, many years, the fact that it's come up is just because it's a, a use application, and.
We know, all, all years I've been going back, more than that, I never, never even noticed.
Okay, so you correspond to the school, that was for what, for, just for?
Just, we're trying to get an easement.
Right.
For them to issue it, and they won't respond.
Easement for what?
As the county wants an easement to allow for their, one of their conditions.
If there's no easement, then, how, how, how can it be?
How can it be there, I don't know.
They've been using it for decades, and the school doesn't seem interested in.
Cause nobody going in that off the back there.
Right.
What's the next?
They rarely go in and out of the back there, they come, you know, they come in this, this way.
Right.
We've, we've been doing that way today, it's been blocked by a trailer.
I parked that trailer there.
He's a contractor.
Cause I was doing some landscaping. So.
Drive into that park, we could all go there right now.
Yeah.
School would have no problem with it, so, going into that park.
Right.
It's, it's a public park. School owns it, but everyone uses it.
My, my client's never had a complaint, never been in, in, in issue with the school, they would be here if there was a problem.
Alright. Right, yeah. Motion to open up the public, motion to open up the caution, do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Uh.
Any, opposed, anybody from the public who should speak on the project? Anybody from the public who should speak on the project, hearing now the motion to close, motion to close, open the caution, do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Any opposed? No, okay, uh, the biggest, well, a lot of concern, one of the big things we may have, which we really can't forward on, is that we don't have drainage.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, my recommendation is that you ask for continuation, um, and get drainage along with everything else straightened out, and then come back.
Yeah, we, we'll submit the drainage, and then you'll hopefully refer us to zoning. Okay?
We can't, until we, we get that straightened out, we can't do anything.
Right, the same system that's submitted is just moving, but I get it, we have to satisfy the comments.
You gotta satisfy the comments.
I have a question, how, how do we resolve number one with Bruce?
So, so that came from Bruce and, um.
Rock County.
Rockland County.
I guess, if I can comment, um, I believe what the applicant is saying is that's a prescriptive easement, it's been treated as an easement, it exists, it's just not in writing and filed, it would be nice if it was in writing and filed, it's not. This board has traditionally wanted to see things in writing, because that makes it very clear, um, I did some research on this, and there is quite a large amount of case law that says this board's purview is not to be looking into easements and giving legal advice on easements, um, and this board doesn't grant, so even if this board grants it, it doesn't give them the legal right to use that, the school could always come up with an injunction, so they move forward at their own risk, but, um, there is some case law that says that we cannot deny this because of easement issues, that's not really our job, and whatever this board does, it doesn't give them the right to use that land. Um, that issue can only be determined by the Supreme Court, Rockland County Supreme Court, so, um, I believe.
There's no liability for us.
There is no liability, because we do not determine it, even if we grant approval, that doesn't give them the authority to use it if they don't have the authority, but again, their, their argument, I think, to use the legal terminology, is that there's a prescriptive easement, it's not in writing, but it's been used since time immemorial or for.
This is what I'm getting at, if, if, they've used it for many, many years, don't they come with a, a classification of used by rights?
Not, not, you can't do that with public land. You can't claim public property.
But, in, in any event.
You're not claiming, you're claiming use. You're not claiming, they still ain't ten ownership, you're, you're.
Bruce, you would have to override Bruce.
Well, remember, you don't have to override Bruce, county planning, you have to override Bruce, you just do not make it a condition. You always have that right, the only one you ever have to override is county planning, and so that you would have to override, and just the law says that we, we're not supposed to be looking, we cannot deny for purposes of easements.
I called the administrative department directly, and, and they said they would give back to me, and, again, nothing.
Why don't you do it right now, until they come back?
That's every second, because Bruce didn't know how.
Satisfied, you satisfied, if you don't, definitely, we'll, we'll, but I think we do it right now.
Okay.
Get the, uh, bring the school book right, so you can ask for continuation?
Yes.
Say the words.
We, please ask for a continuation, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, uh, some comments, James Services Fence.
What's your name, sir? What's your name, sir?
Uh, James P. Mauer the second, PE.
You gotta spell Mauer.
M-A-U-E-R.
Thanks, and just sign in.
Sure.
Yes, sir, what can I do you for?
I'm here from Colliers Engineering, on behalf of Saint Dominic's Family Services, um, the project proposes to put a six-foot vinyl fence around their existing playground area with the purpose of separating different age groups, um, that also involves the removal of an existing four-foot post and rail fence that's there today, um, as well as incorporation of several, um, five-foot wide pedestrian gates to access the areas.
Let me go through the consultant's.
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Terran, before you start, do you have your posting half of David?
Yes, I do.
Alrighty, okay, Office of Building and Zoning Planning, Rick Oliver, August twenty-eighth, he has eight, eight point three comments. I have a letter from Department Environmental Management Engineering, September ninth, Bruce Peters has one comment. Um, I have a letter from Bureau of Fire Prevention, August twenty-sixth, one comment. Uh, a letter from, uh, Rockland County Department of Planning, August twenty-eighth, this is a narrative. I have a letter from Rockland County Planning Department, August thirteenth, uh, comments attached. Letter from Rockland County Planning Department, August thirteenth, consent to town of Orange Town service lead agent. I have a letter from Rockland County Sewer District number one, August twenty-fifth, two comments. I have a letter from Alfred Gaddy, August twenty-seven, based on a drawn by the fence, should not be in conflict with existing gas facilities. I also have a letter from Paul Demansky, August nineteenth, and three comments. Thinking of this, coming back and I will.
Yeah.
The area, okay, I have a short DAF, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, and. I have a letter from you, uh, John of Colliers Engineering, uh, July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, it's a narrative. Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any question or comments?
So the fence is the section off, where you have the.
Yeah, two different age groups, there's a playground there now for the younger children, and then a slightly older group, um, to the right of that on the plan here. Yeah, two different age groups, there's a playground there now for the younger children, and then a slightly older group, um, to the right of that on the plan here.
We can't move over like this. Huh?
Oh, please.
Oh, he's, he's in the. He does like, he's a summer consultant.
Oh, oh, yeah. Yeah, you're not gonna do it.
That's all, take the one down, put it on.
Yep.
Mike, anything? No comments, thank you very much. Lisa, Mike?
I have no comments.
Matt?
What color is the fence gonna be?
White.
White.
Uh, is the motion open to the public? Motion of public portion, uh, second? All favor?
Who's second?
Please, pick one.
Please second.
Pick one, anyone? Okay, uh, anybody for the public who should speak on this project? One more time, anybody for the public who should speak on this project, hearing done, motion closed.
Motion closed, public portion, do I have a second?
All favor, aye, aye, opposed, um, motion, motion for final conditions.
Motion for lead agent.
Oh, lead, yeah, 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 no way you gotta do that, motion for lead agent. Uh, second? All, all favor, aye, motion for neck deck?
Motion, motion for neck deck?
Second?
I don't either.
All favor?
Who wait, who seconded, who made the motion?
Mandell, but he seconded.
Lisa, I got your blue fingers, oh, you've got your blue fingers dancing.
Yeah, we're forward.
Okay, you caught up?
So that was for neck deck or for secret?
That was for secret.
That one was for secret, okay.
No, I know, I'm sorry. Neck deck, secret.
That's secret.
Okay.
Okay, all favor, aye, any opposed, done, motion for final conditions?
Motion for final conditions.
And the conditions are, office of building zoning and planning, Rick Oliver, August twenty-eighth, has eight point three comments. Uh, Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town Orange Town, September ninth, has one comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, uh, Town Orange Town, August twenty-sixth, one comment. Department of Planning, August twenty-eight, no comments. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, August twenty-fifth, two comments. And a letter from Alfred Gaddy, uh, August twenty-seventh. And a letter from, oh, I need it, I'll put it in there, right? Okay, do I have a second?
Um, please.
Can we wave, uh?
Not wave.
Oh, okay, uh, do you have a motion to wave, uh, Saint Dominic's Road back to work? Motion to wave back to work? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All favor, aye, okay, any opposed, none, okay, I need a second on the final conditions?
Second.
Okay, all favor, aye, any opposed, none, got it, good luck.
Thank you.
Motion for, Mason, their motion for adjournment? Mr. Brenner, I see you.
You need to act here, it's a way to.
I'll tell you something, I learned new law tonight.
You would?
I learned some new law tonight.
Did they ever fill in, remember they usually bunk around the property, did they ever fill that in?
Oh, no.
Maybe they know it was there, and they, this is back twenty years ago, they had a underground bunker there. They were doing work in the yard, and pulling this stuff up, and they found it, and they come back.
On, on this property?
Yeah, they put it all the way in the back on the hill. Know where the general, the general is all the way in the back?
Yeah.
They put the, uh, gave the passing about twelve, the P V S. Yeah, I bet you more than that. No, that was, uh. Mr. Brenner, what can I do you for, sir?
Okay, um, Mr. Skay, um, has to, okay, the owner is in San Francisco, um, on, on a project which he's working on. I got this project this morning, um, what the owner has to do, he has to move a piece of equipment that Orange and Rockland is requesting that he do, because he needs more power in the, in the building. Um, it's actually an emergency rea- reason for moving it, because the building can't function without the power. Orange and Rockland says, well, we'll give you the power, but we have to move it, which is what they're doing with the chiller. This road is strictly used by Orange and Rockland, nobody else, okay?
Shouldn't be used by?
Strictly used by Orange and Rockland, it's not used by the public, it's not used by his employees, it's strictly used by Orange and Rockland. The reason I say that is I spoke to the, uh, fire district, he just wanted to know what the road is being used for. And understanding that it's not being used by the public nor his employees, um, he doesn't have a problem with the road the way it is.
Go through the consulting, folks. Office of Building, Zoning and Planning, uh, Rick Oliver, August twenty-eighth, he has eleven point three. I have a letter from Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town Orange Town, September ninth, one comment. I have a letter from the Bureau of Fire Prevention, August twenty-sixth, one comment. Letter from Rockland County Department of Planning, September second, they have eleven point one comments. I have a letter from Rocky County Department of Planning, uh, August twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, consent to Town Orange Town Planning Board, Service Lead Agent. Letter from Rocky County Planning Department, August twenty-seventh, comments passed. I have a letter from Rockland County Sewer District Number One, August twenty-fifth, two comments. I have a letter, August twenty-eighth, Alfred Gaddy, based on a drawing provided, there does seem to be any outside construction, so there should not be any outside gas conflict with the road. I have a letter from, uh, New York State, from David Grocher, New York State D O T, uh, August twelfth. Any more impact from state highway system? I have a letter from New York State D O T, August twelfth, consent to Town Orange Town Service Lead Agent. I have a letter from New York State D O T, August twelfth, this project is outside of jurisdiction. Letter from Coal Mine Properties, August fifth, narrative. It is, uh, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have anything else, Patrick? Thank you very much.
I do have one item.
Yes, sir.
On Mr., Mr. Rick Oliver's letter, eleven one, I do have to make a disclosure, there was some emergency work that had to be done for Orange and Rockland for this to take place. It was done, there was some work was done in terms of getting this new electrical work done. Yeah, I'm just putting the fire in, so if anybody sees it, sees there was some minor work done. Well, it's nothing new.
Okay, any questions or comments? Um. Have they, had to move it or?
They had, big, Orange and Rockland, they, they had to move that transformer into a certain area, he called it a chiller, but it's a transformer, they had to move the transformer to give him more power.
The, uh, replace the cooling system, what, what type of cooling system is it, have they, just chiller, new chiller plant?
I guess they have to cool off the, it's a, it's a.
I think, I think what you're saying is the chiller, the new one, it requires more power, and that's why they will.
That's why we.
Do the job for. Yeah. Anything? Do you like anything? Is it here or near?
I don't know.
You got the, if it's the, uh, Rockland County, uh, does it say outside? Is the new equipment inside or outside?
I'm saying it's outside.
It's outside.
Should say it's border or air.
It's, it's, I think that. Is that July 12th? I can't tell, I don't know what the symbols are.
Is it a closed system or open system?
Orders apply, it's border.
It's a closed system.
It's a closed system. Uh, so, so.
He's not letting you up so easy.
Rockland County five, the, uh, that's the one that was, is the new equipment outside or inside? Cause Rockland County five is, they're talking about noise attenuation, some measures have come to implement it. If it's inside, then it's not applicable, but if it's outside, then, I don't know.
I think the equipment's outside.
Yes, I thought so. Do that go to I U D?
Who's gonna, there's nobody there in that area.
Yeah.
There's nobody there. I, I mean.
Location outdoor.
Did the two dark boxes on the top of the plan look like chillas?
Right.
Outside.
I don't think there'd be any noises in excess of the trucks that go down nine W.
Just the wall force, no? There's, there's that Rockland County's questions, right? You know how tall that, the venue over, so the new, uh, equipment is? Something was always there.
I think the wall's there.
Always there?
Yeah.
I think the wall's about four feet high, but that section of property is a little bit elevated from the, the driveway.
Right.
So, six to seven feet off the, the parking.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how, what, what is it we do?
Oh, you're not gonna see him, I think the building's gonna lie.
Okay, okay, nothing else, did he say? Mike, anything? They're just trying to, um, they're removing outdoor chillers or refrigerants?
He's moving them.
Moving them.
Yeah, because they gotta, they gotta make big, they gotta have to have bigger ones, because Orange and Rockland, he's gotta give them.
It's in the same footprint, right, you're. That's next to fifty-nine, fifty, fifty-seven.
Yeah, if you look at the previous, it looks like a bunch of A C units right next to each other, so they're taking all those out, and then putting these massive, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, size like a.
So you're not moving them, you're removing them and replacing them?
With these, these bigger, new modular chillers.
They go better. They go be, they go better. So even the noise, you're removing a whole bunch, and you're adding a whole bunch.
Securizing itself.
Yeah.
And, and there's nobody there, as I said, except the foxes. Maybe they'll knock off some deer.
There might be special foxes, maybe.
No, it's called eagles.
That was, that was my only question, I just wanted, they've taken away. Okay, okay, Matt?
No, no questions.
No, you don't. Alright. Uh, okay, motion for lead agent, motion of public portion? Oh, I'm sorry, there is a, motion open up the public session, do I have a second? Any, all favor? Opposed? Anybody from the public who should speak on this? Bruce, we'll sit back there, uh, Tom, go back, sit over there, at least when you complain.
No, I would've complained on somebody of the others.
I gotta ask, one more time, motion, uh, anybody from the public who should speak on this, hearing done?
Motion closed.
Second?
Second.
All favor? Any opposed? None, uh, motion for lead agent?
Motion for lead agent.
Second? All favor? Aye, any opposed? None, no, any agents. Am I going too fast?
No, keep going, keep going.
Not for me.
I'm on a roll, let's go.
Yeah, it's secret or neck deck or?
Yeah, motion for neck deck? Motion for neck deck? Second?
Second.
All favor? Aye, any opposed? Motion for final conditions?
Motion for final conditions.
Conditions are, office of building zoning and planning, Rick Oliver, August twenty-eighth, has eleven point three comments. Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Town Orange Town, September ninth, one comment. Bureau of Fire Prevention, August twenty-sixth, one comment. Department of Planning, Town, uh, Rockland County Department of Planning, September second, two thousand twenty-five, they have eleven point one comments. Rockland County Sewer District Number One, August twenty-fifth, two comments. Alfred Gaddy, August twenty-eighth, one comment. David Groper, Department, uh, D O T, New York D O T, August twelfth, one comment. I have a second? Second? All favor? Aye, any opposed? Yeah, Mr. Brenner?
Mr. Skay got it. You know what he's actually doing, you know, he's with a big company right now, the company's, they're actually being interviewed to do work for Google, he's actually in San Francisco, working on a project for Google. That's interesting.
Okay, uh, I think we have two minutes, correct?
Correct, it's twenty-third.
Motion to, uh, accept minutes and correct it? Motion to approve, uh, correct it, minutes from Joe, uh, July twenty-third?
Approved, as amended.
As amended.
Mandell?
Second.
Andrews? Andrews, all favor? Aye, any opposed? None, any else?
Close the meeting.
Motion for adjournment? Hang in, don't put that in there. Mr. Mandell, second, Mr. Andrews, all favor? Aye, any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Mr. Brenner, thank you.
Last thing, yes.
They're allowed, they're, they're, yeah, so.
But an iron is.
Yeah, I mean, we always do, um, we all.